Thank you. This is that single board meeting of the year in which the superintendent for a brief glorious moment is the chair. So, I have the opportunity to call a new order. And my first and only order of business as chair of the school board is to ask for nominations for chairperson. I don't have any nominations. Motion on a second. Do you have any other nominations? You're in none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Four zero one. And just so everyone knows, Mrs. Macedo is taking minutes tonight because Mrs. Gothier is unavailable. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the chair meeting. I have a list of all the roles we have to fill. If you want me to just pass that down and...
Yeah, if you...would you mind?
I'd like to make a motion to have Bonnie Seer be the vice chair. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? I'm staying.
Mm-hmm. I'll stand.
Four zero one. Okay.
I'll give you a second definitely.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to have Mr. Brown be the budget committee representative.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain. My suggestion would be that we have an executive meeting where we go over all the committees and discuss the committees. I was just counting them before someone...one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. I believe there's more than that, isn't there?
There are two written down at the bottom in pen that I added.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen. I thought there was more than thirteen, but...Jerry, you were gonna come up with a list. I recall asking you a couple and you said you were working on that.
No, we did submit that list sometime back.
Oh, yeah, let me see, is it?
I'm not sure.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
I get thirteen. What...
Just to get you guys...but if you didn't get it, I can certainly pull it up from my computer and probably be after tomorrow.
Well, what do people think? I mean, do...go ahead, Mark.
I guess I have a couple questions in regards to the committees. It seems like there are quite a few, but I guess I have a question in regards to why as a board we're actually sitting on some of these committees and you all are not doing the work and then coming to us because you're the ones that maybe have the best interest. Point in question is that I've been told that we have a truancy committee when in all honesty, I think that that most likely is your job, your job to meet with Jay and to meet with the truancy officer and then if you have an issue, you come to us.
This is the first I've heard of a truancy.
Okay, that was one that I knew and then...
Yeah. But those would all be privacy issues anyway?
I haven't...I have a couple. I mean, I have questions on like...I was told that we have a project committee. Is that true?
Never heard of that.
Okay, so that one's done. The budget committee, I can absolutely understand why we have a representative. Policy committee, I don't necessarily know if it should just be two of us working on it. I think that maybe we should have an executive work session once a month to work on those as a group because everyone needs to have a voice in that, especially on the board, not necessarily all of you, but that's something we should work on as a core group. Professional development, I don't understand why one of us has to be on it when all of you know better what you need and you can come to us and what policies do we have to...we should be a policymaking board and you should have control over what...we can tell you what direction we want and what goals and where we want to be strategically, but it's not necessarily...we don't necessarily know what's best for the staff. You're gonna know that and then I don't understand why you're not reporting to us saying, "We need this policy done so that we can instill this to meet your strategic goal."
I would agree.
The...as you know, the role of the administration is to support the board. The board created these committees. The administration didn't create these committees. And just like when board members have disagreements, sometimes which can be vehement, it would be inappropriate for members of the administration to try to inject ourselves in the work of the board. Our role is to support you, to stay out of your way in areas that you choose to be involved. If we wanted to go back and take a look at the roles of boards versus the roles of administration and use that to help decide whether or not some of these groups should exist, I agree. I think there are some...there are multiple board committees that really in most circumstances are handled by administration. The administration is ready, willing, and able to do that work. In fact, it makes it more complicated for us sometimes not to be the ones that are doing the work in the first place and bringing them to you.
So, to get back to my first statement, should we say have an executive meeting or just a regular meeting to go over this and discuss what committees we should have and maybe some committees that we really can have the administration take care of and report back to us?
We might be close to accomplishing that right now.
Is that just a motion? Well, this is my personal opinion. I don't know whose opinion may follow that and it may be that we want to make a motion to have an executive meeting to kind of figure out what we need, what we don't need, rego over everything and then...
Right. Instead of taking up a lot of time here in the meeting, in a regular meeting, maybe we...because for example, I see that the wellness committee is not on here. That you're legally obligated to have. Now, is it legally...a board member legally obligated to be on that committee?
Yeah, there are different types of committees. The wellness committee is an administrative committee that is required by law to have representation from the board. So, that is...it's not a board committee. It's an administrative committee that needs to have board representation and I think the professional development committee is similar. It's not a committee that's established or led by the board, but it's a committee on which the board has representation. So, maybe we should have broken those out more to indicate which one were board committees and which were other committees on which the board has representation.
Exactly. It's very difficult to come to the first meeting and volunteer your services when you don't know what is actually a requirement, what the time, you know, how often you meet, what's expected of you, and even asking, we really haven't gotten a clear, just, you know, a clear list of that at this point in time.
Is that list something that one of the administration would decipher, you know, put in this category or that category and then bring back to us if we tabled the committee issue for tonight and brought it back to the next meeting?
Absolutely, yeah. I can bring you a more refined list.
Jerry, the last one, I can't understand your...
I think transportation and food service were the two that I added.
Food service?
And that's an unusual one, too.
I make a motion to table the assignment of committees until the next meeting.
I second that.
To the next meeting?
Yeah. Which would be...
Whatever, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What I would plan to do for the next meeting is bring you a recommended committee structure on behalf of the administration and then that will allow you to take a look at what our collective suggestion is and you can add to it, subtract from it, make it any way you want. That would be my inclination if that's what you're looking for. I think that's a good idea.
All right.
Is that all right with you?
I voted for it. All right, so next we have manifest review.
Andrew, these...we need the names the wrong on the last page. Do you want us to just cross it out? Okay. Are we looking at all of them right now or just the checks? I'm looking at all of them. Here, just cross out one of those and then just put your name. The same thing's gonna be with this one. This is the check register. Okay. Mr. Johnson, any question?
Can I ask? I have another question of Andrew. Andrew, does this...if we chose as a board to have a work session once a month, like prior to our first meeting, can you...does this...does checking the manifest have to be done in public or could we do that in a work session and then approve it in public so that we have time to look everything over to understand? Because coming into it, it's difficult for us to know what you want from us and what we're looking at and we may need a little lesson on what you want us to look at. We used to have very capable people on the board, that new budget, and were able to kind of guide us into what we were looking for and what we needed to do, but where we don't have that, can...is there a way that...does this have to be done in a public session or can we do it in an executive session where we have time to read over it more than 15 minutes?
Clarify if I'm being public or not.
Okay. And I'm just asking, that's just my opinion, I'm not...
What was the Masonry Unlimited Board, Andrew?
He was blocking the doors.
Okay. Yep. And what was our world about?
I'm sorry?
Our, like Acton, Wakefield, Waterford.
Yeah, that would be gone if you signed it.
Bobby?
What that is.
Oh, they came in and did presentations and did...
Water testing?
They did water testing for the kids and showed how to take samples.
And unless you'll see up here.
I remember reading that in a weekly website or something.
These are all...
So, that was expensive.
So, which is signed for Sophie, you have a question. It describes...
Have the water tested through the council.
I think it was more of a demonstration.
Okay. So, if you want me to just...
You're testing the water, showing it's how it's done rather than...
Do you want to look up?
I'm pretty sure...
No? Okay.
I'll be used to it. You say it loud. So, this would help from that. Yeah. I feel... I love you.
Steve, you had a question on the Masonry Unlimited?
Yeah.
Did you want the invoice?
No, no, Andrew already told me where it was before. Right, the door, the front door.
Who is choice two?
I would have to see that. It's a Title I tutor provider that comes out of the Title I draft. SES tutor.
Are you... You want to sign your white one?
Do I want to sign my white one? I don't.
And... When people are done looking at it, more pro that.
Yeah, I am, thank you.
Anybody want to make a motion to approve the manifest?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to make a motion to add new business to the agenda.
I'll second that. It's not on there already.
I don't see it on there.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That'll be number four on the agenda and everything else will move up or down.
Move down, yeah. Yeah, I'd like to take the agenda out of order. Yes, I'd like to make new business number four and everything move down. None in the relatively...not tomorrow, next week, but within a month, I would like to see that the board hold a special meeting and we call all the employees together and we sit down with everyone, try to get input, suggestions from all the employees on how we can make the school environment a better place for everyone, the kids and the employees included. I'd like to see the employees be part of the process and I don't feel that they have been a part of the process in the past. So, I would like us to see us, like I said, a special meeting, bring everyone together and try to make it a better environment and to see if we can come up with any better ways to make the education for the kids, come up with better ideas for the education for the kids. And I'd like to see the employees be part of that process.
You have a date in mind?
I'm thinking, you know, maybe give you guys a little bit of time to get your feet wet, maybe like figure maybe about a month from now, would that work for everyone?
I have to look at calendars.
I mean, we don't necessarily have to, I mean, if we want to set a date now, but if you'd like to...
Set a date at the next meeting?
Could set a date at the next meeting if that's what everyone's thinking. I just thought maybe, you know, figuring about like a month, give you guys a little bit of time to get acclimated with something.
Would you consider it on a Wednesday for a staff meeting? We already have, we have a collective audience already at that point.
That would be fine, probably on our off Wednesday.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think they very much appreciate it.
Confirm it at the next meeting?
You want to just get a date?
You want to...well, yeah, if we're gonna do that, that kind of narrows it down to two Wednesdays. Or actually, one Wednesday if you're talking about a month from now.
Don't make it too simple.
The fourth Wednesday from now would...no, that would be a regular meeting, so probably how about April 24th?
At the 10th.
About the 10th.
The 10th? I'll set that up.
And what time is your meeting at Jerry?
3:30.
It starts at 3:30?
Yes, sir.
And how much time will you need for your...
I can make that meeting all about you.
I don't know if all of us can be here that early.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. I mean, do you need...
If I need...I think this is important enough and would take enough time, I try to make my meetings about an hour.
I respectfully can't be here till 4:00. Well, the 10th, no release.
I can't either.
10th early release.
10th is their early release.
10th is the one.
Is there a reason we couldn't have...
I could...we could do it at 4:00 and I think, again, honestly, I think people would make that time to be here a little longer because I think it's an important enough issue that they're gonna want that and I think they'll appreciate that opportunity to have that direct audience with you.
Can you make it at 4? Well, what about early release, Jerry? Is it...
I would have to check my...see if I have the, on that early release day. Otherwise, I could make that early release a work...we could make that early release a workshop for you to meet with them and that would be, I think, a wise use of that time. I think it'd be great for them and I think it'd be great for you.
Well, but that would also give you the opportunity, whether you want, wanted to bring up anything with them prior to our meeting with them.
Well, I think I'd like to have them kind of speak from their own needs rather than be influenced by me.
Oh, absolutely.
I think that'd be...and again, I can't say enough about how much I think that would be appreciated by the staff.
So, Wednesday, April 10th at 4:00 P.M.?
What about the 17th? If we did it at 4:00 P.M. on a Wednesday early release...
Would you talk...that's what I was asking.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the 17th?
The 17th?
Your board meeting.
But that's our board meeting night, too.
It doesn't...
If you...
Yeah, I guess we could...
We'll have time to go over manifest.
Well, I guess, yeah.
I'll make it work.
17th?
17th.
17th.
17th at 4?
4:00 P.M.
I'll have to change the administrative team meeting, but...
That's not gonna be the first time.
So, I was looking at you.
I've got a few other things, I'm just trying to throw this in the other way.
Steve, I do. We're gonna try to bring it up. I'm going to need a request, a day where I would suspend kindergarten activities for the day, allowing the teachers to screen incoming kindergarten students. We...in the past, it's been done, you know, with kids in the building, they've been had limited staff to do a proper screening and I want to make sure we have a good understanding where our preschoolers are coming in, of course, we place them appropriately. So, I'd like to let you know what that date will be, but I'd like to request the date probably in April.
Okay.
I think it needs a vote because it would be suspending...
I make a motion to forego a day of kindergarten for new screening for incoming kindergarteners.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That date's forthcoming. Just wanted to clarify that.
Do you have a...you gonna hit you with time?
Time? Yep. I don't need to make a motion for it, do I?
Yeah.
Well, we do. Do you have an issue with time?
There's not an "on" there.
It's about a start time for the school board meetings.
I work in mass, so everybody understands. I work in mass, I drive two hours ago to work, I leave 3:00 in the morning, don't get home here till four-ish, depending on weather. I'd like to see if we can move our meetings earlier. I don't know if that helps everybody. What do we say, 5:00, I think? I was thinking about...and then if we can limit the time late, because I basically can't stay here till midnight because I get up so early, like at 2:00 in the morning. I don't know if that's possible, I'm just asking that question.
I would hope.
I'd like to see the meetings be shorter if possible from what I, you know, from what I've sat here for the last year, I've seen, you know, it drag out a little bit from, you know, issues that just go on forever. You know, 7:30 is what my thoughts were, this is just my opinions on these things, but, you know, 5:00 to 7:30 if possible. If it runs later, I have no issue with that, but I'd like to see if we can do something like that. I don't know if that helps everybody else, too. I mean, I don't know if you guys just hang around until the meeting starts till 6:00 anyway, so...
Whenever you want to meet, we will be here. It's your meeting.
Can you...you have a problem with 5:00, getting here by 5?
Nope, not at all.
Any of you have a problem with that?
I wish you all...
Last point of order?
Well, you can.
So, 5:00 to 7:30?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make a motion from 5:00 to 7:30.
Last point of order?
Last point of order.
I'll second that.
Discussion? 7:30 to include non-public. Would you like to amend your motion or would you like me to amend your motion?
You can amend it.
Okay, I need...can I have the exact wording of the motion?
Do you want to amend your motion or would you rather I...
I amend my motion to, for 7:30 to non-public meeting?
What...
You have to say...
Start time moved to 5:00 and we'll adjourn public at 7:00 and go into non-public at 7:00 and we'll... and go into non-public at 7:00, and we'll adjourn at 7:30.
Right, that's my motion. Going to repeat that?
Yeah, okay, so the motion is to start all meetings?
Move the start time to 5:00 P.M.
To start all meetings at 5:00 P.M.?
5:00 P.M. And to adjourn the public meeting at 7:00, to go into non-public, and adjourn non-public at 7:30.
Thank you.
With the exception of this meeting?
With the exception of this meeting, of course.
Yeah, we don't have to, because we didn't, this is adjourned.
The motion is to start all meetings at 5:00 P.M., to adjourn public meeting at 7:00 P.M., to adjourn non-public at 7:30 P.M. Is that correct? Okay, so Bob made the motion, and do I have, somebody may second it, Ralph?
I did second it, well, I seconded it.
Are you still seconding?
But I'll second it with the amendments.
Second with amendment, okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think, Mr. Chaney, we have to leave some sort of in there, worry in the middle of an important issue, non-public, you know, we might need to.
I agree with that.
Well, why, but, I mean, but just to set a, a, a time.
A general time.
Time, time frame to do that. Committees, we already discussed that.
You need.
Good.
I would like to ask, I did meet with Jay for the first time with Bob on Friday, and I would like to ask what the board needs to do to go green. And if we can have assistance from the S.A.U. or from the district to help us not have to the law books, the policy books, what's available to us so that we can go green?
There are some established models, and I think what, what we would do is we could aim for the next meeting, it might be that it would be two meetings to try to set up a series of steps. And the way I've seen it done before is you, you make everything available on laptops and you email it out so that everybody has everything they need for the meeting. They can also have, you know, a link to the laws that everybody can have on their desktop, so everybody can access it at the meeting. Links to the website, so everybody can access all the policies. So, everybody has at their fingertips things that we typically now are making copies of. Those materials could be, once they're set up that way, it's easy to distribute them to the public that way because all the board packets you would send, you send out your non-public material under separate cover, that doesn't go out to, to the public. But you just send everything out electronically, and then everybody has it right in front of them and can scroll to the appropriate page. I've been through this before. What we ended up doing in Madison was we looked at the individual needs of board members, and we did end up buying a single laptop for a member so that they could have a designated laptop for all of their board material. Actually, I think we, I think we used one that existed in the system that no longer had some of the capacity that we would need, but it was fine for storing that amount of material. So, it's definitely a process we could, we could look into and bring you a, a plan and a budget for that.
Could my interest would be, I have business information on my laptop, and I am not willing to have the S.A.U. business in case you ever get audited or whatever, I would prefer not to have that financial information out, so I am, my question was, I know that do board members have the ability to get an Apple through the school program? Do we have, what, or can we get a small laptop, or what can we get to help us go green that will save money without using my, my business computer?
Yeah.
So.
Perfectly good question.
And I don't know if you need to know, like, how many of us would need something?
Well, what, what we would do is put together a plan.
Okay.
And the plan would say, these are the steps, and one of the steps would be identifying what the hardware and software needs might be for board members.
All right, thank you.
Is that an interest of the, of the whole board? I heard you express an interest, but.
It is me.
I've, I've suggested that in the past.
Yeah.
Is that something we have to make a motion on?
No.
Okay.
We will develop a plan and get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Work session, do we want to set a vote? Monthly work session, or? Any thoughts on that possibly, maybe? Have a work session and then try to cut down on some parts of the regular meeting, because we are, we are going to, you know, cut back, oh.
Streamline.
Streamline would be a good word, streamline the regular meetings. Do you think maybe we should set up a, a work session?
I'm for that.
For maybe, do we, do we want to dedicate one a month? Do we want, or try to, how do you want, do you want to play it by year? Do you want to set up? Try setting one up, one a month, thoughts?
What would the characteristics of the work session be, Steve?
Well, basically, for example, like the manifest say, maybe. You could do a manifest say, and, and just to kind of try to streamline a lot of the stuff that we're going through right now that we could do in a work session, and then just come into the regular meeting and just vote on it. And then move on.
Okay.
My only concern would be conducting school board business outside of the public. You know, I mean, I would still want, I would still want the board to do our business, or I guess make the decisions and move in certain directions expeditiously, but always clearly, and, and, you know, all transparency and.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, I'm not suggesting do it in the back closet or.
Well, I think I heard you say back closet.
I, I just thought it might be a good idea if we're, if we're, you know, we, we changed the, the start and the end times of the meetings, whether maybe we could have, should have a work session. For, like I said, maybe one, one a month or something, go over some of the issues, you know, have.
Being new, I, I see that you, like, the curriculum coordinator comes in, Andrew comes in, you come in, you give presentations occasionally as well as you. Are those things that you can come to us and give us the information in a work session so that we understand what's going on and we don't have to make votes or anything? It's like, can we have advanced knowledge of it? So that we're not coming in and having to make a decision within a 15-minute span of having your presentation? Can you do that stuff in a work session to shorten that up? I guess I'm saying, like, if you have to come in, I don't know what, and I don't know, so I'm asking.
Well, typically, typically the way that that's done is we're sort of partway there because we provide the reports in writing. And typically, that's done as part of the consent agenda. So, the, all of the administration's reports would come in from, from all of us, and it would come to the meeting, and the, the chair might say, did anyone have any question on any of the administration reports? Yes, I had a question on Scotts. You deal with Scotts, okay, that having been addressed, are we ready to move on? There's, it's a, you accept those reports by consent. And there's not a lot of discussion, there's not formal presentation, and it really, it speeds up the meetings. You've got to have, you've got to have reasonably well-written reports, factual reports. I think the reports you've been getting are pretty, pretty normal. And they don't have to have any discussion at all. You can, you can have one motion to accept the consent agenda, and that's accepting those, those. You can also accept committee reports under your consent agenda. You know, the committee, the policy committee has reported back, they recommend passage of policy A.B.C., they recommend tabling D.E.F. And you can accept the policy committee's report on the consent agenda, and then the recommendation of the policy committee simply is adopted by the board. That's another efficient way to use the consent agenda. There, sometimes boards identify other boards that are highly efficient, and will even ask a, a chair or a longtime member of another board to come in and talk to their board about what are some things that they have done over time that they have found to increase efficiency. I know, Jerry, you've talked about the Rochester Board as an example of, of a board that has a lot of members, has more schools and more students than we do, and yet they, they've found a way to really consolidate their meetings.
Streamline, I think, you know, what you were talking about with committees and doing a lot of that sort of private meetings, so it doesn't eliminate that discussion piece before you vote on something, but really, just, it eliminates a lot of the clutter and, you know, certainly discuss the bigger points. But I brought a group of Boy Scouts to the school board meeting, I said, oh, come pick them up at 9:00. 15 board members, you know, everybody, the committees and, and court passed, they had them call and say, you might got to pick them up now because we're done. And I thought, wow, that's streamlined, you know, I don't go to very many board meetings in Rochester, but amazes me that they got so much done in such a short amount of time. But they did a lot of work beforehand. They had a lot, a lot of people do a lot of heavy lifting.
Well, that's what I was kind of thinking, like a work session type thing, try to take care of a lot of this work, and then you kind of streamline the regular meeting.
I think it should be, also, we pointed out that while Rochester's a much bigger district with many more students, we all, we, it's a small district, we have the same issues, we deal with the same policies, we meet the same problems. So, and they have 15, kind of deal to do that heavy lifting work. Your board of five, so I think that's a healthy take into consideration.
I think the only input I have is when the scores do come out, I think having a work session might be very beneficial, especially if we can do almost like a data-looking protocol, looking at data protocol, which we didn't have time to do, but it might, it might help answer some questions that you may still have about the data. So, I would say, if anything in my report, I would say maybe that alone would be worth a work session, that everything else is pretty much like what Jay described.
You want to keep in mind that we run payables every two weeks now. If you do a work session, you're only going to do it once a month. You're changing your process of how we handle paying our bills.
Oh, I don't think that would be our intention.
No.
At least personally, I don't think that would be our intention.
I don't think that necessarily would have to, would have to change. We can look, we can look at that.
Still take care of it, have business as usual during the school board meetings, and then the workshop would be separate, right?
I think that's, I think that's Steve's request, yeah.
We're talking about doing it once a month, we're doing.
I understand.
Well, no, I'm not saying only, no, I'm saying, you know, but once a month, we'd be able to do it in the work session. That would take, take care of, take that part of it out of that meeting. And then the following meeting, we would have to, that would be one of the issues that we would still have to deal with. But it would, it would still help out for that one particular meeting. I don't know, does anybody, do we want to set, set a work session, one for every month? Do you want to think about it?
I think it will help.
I think it would help.
Does anybody have daytime in, in particular?
I don't, I, I think I can amend my schedule to go and be there, you know, and participate in it. I don't have an idea of when it should be, or, you know.
I, I would suggest that we identify how long we want it to be, and then let us go back because we all have various schedules and don't always have control over some of the things that we need to attend, so if we could, if we could decide we want two hours, or we want, whatever you want, then let us put out some proposed regular dates that we could use, and so that we can all confer with our calendars when we have them. So, so we don't have to keep changing it every month. It would be nice to have a good, consistent time.
Four to six, five to seven? They don't need to wait around longer than they should, Jay.
Can you, can you make four, or no? 4:30, do 4:30?
4:30?
If it's confirmed, buddy, it's good for me.
Let's do 4:30, be easy.
4:30?
Yeah.
4:30?
4:30 to six?
4:30 on a Sunday afternoon's fine. Just kidding. Um, no. Folks decide when it's best, then I'll do it.
Do you have a day that's better for you?
No.
No?
No, what's that?
Okay, what day of the week? You pick.
Jay, I think Jay was hoping.
Oh, Jay, all right, so, okay.
He would coordinate with.
Yeah, let, let, let me coordinate it with everybody because I have various meetings that I don't necessarily control, and they're on different weeks of the, you know, different months.
So, next meeting, we can.
If you, if, are you saying an hour and a half, starting at 4:30? That, that gives me, that gives me enough to start on. 4:30 to 6:00, and we'll identify some regular dates.
Should we say 6:00 or 6:30?
6:00 to 6:30.
Somewhere around there.
Whatever you want.
No, it was 6:00, was what was said, so do you want me to amend that?
Whatever, what does anybody feel? An hour and a half or two hours?
I think we should wait till Jay comes back with his recommendations.
Well, I thought he wanted a guideline, but whatever, if you want.
6:00 to 6:30, you know.
Somewhere, somewhere.
We get done early, we get done early.
Okay.
Does anybody else have anything for new business? No, nothing?
For me?
Public comment? Anybody, Jerry?
Alvin, you used the term executive meeting or executive session, what, I haven't heard that before. What is that, is that public or non-public?
Well, it depends, well, usually executives are non-public, I probably shouldn't have used the word executive. If these work sessions will, will be a public meeting.
I just never heard the term here, public and non-public or workshops, and when I heard executive session, I wasn't sure what it was. Thanks.
So, your workshop would include the public, your work session?
Yeah.
Because you, you did call it an executive meeting, which would have been non-public.
I, I misspoke, I apologize.
And the manifest, it's my understanding, because we went through this before, has to be done in public. It has to be voted forward, voted on in public. I remember that coming up as an issue.
Voted on in public?
It could be, could it be discussed and interpreted and things like that during a work, workshop?
I'm pretty sure we had this discussion, and it was determined that it all had to take place in a public meeting in front of the public.
So, where the workshops are going to be public meetings, are you saying that maybe the manifest just needs to be approved and forwarded during a regular school board meeting?
Well, you have, you have workshops that you're talking about, are they, a lot of, most of the time workshops don't have minutes, per se, just as generalization, because your workshop could have minutes? So, you could approve the manifest at the workshop as long as it was a public meeting?
Okay, thank you.
Jerry?
Do they have training courses for the new board members still with the New Hampshire Education Association?
School Board Association, everyone signed up tonight.
What was that meeting you guys had on Monday, was that emergency, or?
No, there was, there was not, no emergency. We, the, the budget committee called a meeting, so the board thought it would be a good idea to have a representation at the budget committee meeting.
Yeah, we reviewed the Water District figures, right, at the budget committee hearing?
Yep. And it wound up being pretty much it.
That's what, that's what the email was that I got to review, that we do that every year. They have a public hearing for the Water District, and then they have their elections and their meetings, and usually, we, we review those in April after the election, but we did it earlier this year.
Right. And we also wanted to remind the budget committee that with the S.A.U. withdrawal that passed the Warren article, that the budget committee needs to appoint a budget committee member to the S.A.U. withdrawal committee.
Right.
So, I had contacted Tony Bodah and informed her that we were having that meeting to temporarily appoint someone. And then, also about the S.A.U. withdrawal, appointing some budget committee member, and she told me that she would send out an email. Whether she did or not, I'm not sure.
So, that meeting was posted in Milton? At the S.A.U. office?
And it was posted here.
Oh, at the school?
Everywhere, everywhere that it's normally posted.
I didn't see it online, and I didn't get a, I didn't get an email from Kathy with the agenda or the notice that that meeting was taking place, that's how I usually get notified is through an email, but I didn't get that, so I didn't even know that it took place.
We're sorry about that. It was on the board, in the hallway?
Right, well, we know that you guys meet the first and third Wednesday of every month, so we're pretty much acclimated to that, and so, you know, and like I say, Kathy sends me the agenda, everything. And so, you know, and like I say, Kathy sends me the agenda every, and sends it to Dave Lee and I don't know if Ed gets it or not, but we always get, we always get a copy of the agenda and, and that and, I mean, if these, I don't know what you call it, it's emergency meetings, spontaneous, whatever it was, comes up, I mean, I wouldn't come down here every day and check the board just in case an emergency meeting came up or check the website every day at like eight o'clock or noon time or some other time of the day in case an emergency came up and you guys called the school board meeting. So that was just the only thing. I, I was just surprised to not get a email notification about it.
Is it? There, yeah. I don't know who else called it an emergency meeting. I think you're the only one calling it an emergency meeting.
I don't know, it was unscheduled, I guess, or I don't know what it was. I don't know what, what, what it would fall under, I don't know what you call it.
Well, my understanding is that, you mentioned to me earlier that, that Kathy Vigil of my office, you spoke to her and she apologized saying that she didn't get an email to you and, and I apologize to you as well that there weren't additional means beyond the, the regular posting to get it out. It happened on relatively short notice. It was a very brief meeting on a single topic and I accept responsibility for making sure that the public has an opportunity to know about meetings and, and attend them. So you have received two apologies about this and I don't know that there's much more that the board can do at this point.
Well, I think that the board should be aware of it because ultimately the responsibility to adhere to RSA ninety-one is, it comes to, comes to their responsibility.
Yes.
And they should know that, that they may not be getting the best, the best advice from our superintendent. I think that's important for the board to know and I think it might be important when they go to the training for the school board that they could bring it up and they could look into it for themselves and make sure that they have the right information and make sure that, that maybe they'll let, let people know what's going on because that's a pretty big deal to us here in Wakefield.
Criticism, criticism accepted.
Yeah, that's fine and, and I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity, but I mean, the, the board members should, should know that it's ultimately their responsibility and we talked out in the hallway and, and I don't think that you were aware of what the definition was in RSA ninety-one, section six, about what constitutes an emergency to have an emergency meeting. So if you wanna change it from calling it an emergency meeting, calling it a, some other name and so that it doesn't fall under the, doesn't fall under the restrictions of, of the right to know law, that's, that's fine if you wanna do that. And you can call it whatever you want. I mean, we have public and we have non-public and we have emergency meetings. I don't, I, I'm not aware of any other topics. So I think that the board should be aware that, that they, they are responsible for what they do and, and that they should probably make sure that they know what's going on and, and make sure that they do things properly because they may not, they may not get the best advice from, from the SAU down in Milton. That's my only point.
Thank you for your comment. Minutes of the last meeting?
Another public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ed?
Is the new website gonna have a calendar on it?
Yes.
Scott is the one who attended those meetings, yes. The new website will have a calendar. The SAU website is up and almost fully functional and the, the district ones are forthcoming.
Follow-up.
Good.
Is it possible, the, is it possible that the website can have an email alert? Is it built into that so you can sign up for email alerts if you want to and then when the person puts the alert out, it'll go to that list? So if you're not on the list, you're not gonna know, at least.
Do you know?
It does have one, because I signed up.
Oh, okay.
So you can sign up and somebody actually goes and updates it?
Yeah.
Was that sent out this time or is that not working right now?
I was told that the person that is, will be responsible for posting that on the website hasn't been trained yet to do so and so she apologized for that and, but it does have a signup, so I imagine that will function at one point.
Yeah, I know there was discussion today with Back Bay and the individuals who are gonna be responsible for posting, so that's, it's progressing. Yeah, please, please get your name, your name in.
I mean, that would solve the problem in future.
Thank you.
Good solution.
I think they'd be the only one that can make motions on these where we weren't members.
Oh, man, oh, man. But I was thinking, I already asked if I could take things out of, out of order on the agenda. Nate, what are you doing here? Yeah, I don't see, are you here, do you have a discipline report?
I do not this week. It's the first meeting of the month. Jerry just thought with the new board, it'd be nice if I attend and I agreed with him.
All right, I just didn't want you hanging around here if you didn't necessarily.
I love your company.
Okay.
He doesn't know.
Okay, minutes of the last meeting?
Um, I have a correction on page one. It just said that the board asked that Mr. Brown, it should be Mr. Fogg, be sworn immediately.
Where are you?
Uh, one, two, three, four lines up from the, uh, four lines up in the number two. There's a correction on page three. Participating in, in, it's the NAEP test, not the MAP test, it's N-A-E-P and it's the National Assessment Educational Progress instead of Process.
So I'm not with Mary, I'm just changing to N-A-E-P.
N-A-E-P and then the following sentence has saying that National Assessment Process, it's actually National Assessment of Educational Progress instead of Process.
Okay, so National Educati, National Assessment of Education Progress?
Educational.
Okay, Educational Progress, okay. Make the motion to approve the minutes of three, six, thirteen, the public minutes.
As amended?
As amended.
I'll second that motion.
You can't?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, he was.
I'll second. You gonna tell me what I can and cannot do already?
Sorry. I'm just taking the initiative, but yeah, you were, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have two extensions?
Yep.
Three oh two? Let's see, old business?
The last board meeting, there was a question about the, the SOL invoice being taken out of the summer school lines and whether that was supposed to happen. I went back and verified the minutes and the board approved that expenditure from that line last December. Just answer the question that came up.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Jerry?
Nope.
Good night.
Do we have to approve these, Jerry?
That's what I was just, do, um, the, the minutes from the deliberative session, do we have to approve those?
Um, I believe the deliberative session is the, is, has to be approved. I don't know, boy.
I was there, I can make a motion for that. Ralph was there too.
I was.
You were there, you were there.
Yeah, but you weren't on the board.
You weren't on the board though.
Oh, I wasn't on the board, so I was in the, I was there.
And Ralph wasn't on the board, so it's just the two of us.
Sounds like the budget committee.
Right. You can't, you can't make a motion as a board member for the budget committee.
Witness, I was there, witness.
The witness, yeah, okay.
Okay, we'll put Ralph as the witness and, so.
All right.
I'll make a motion to, do, are we supposed to be approving these?
I believe so, but unfortunately without having a staff attorney.
Well, it won't hurt to approve it, I went through it.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the two thousand thirteen school district deliberative session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three extensions?
Three extensions.
I have no correspondence. There was, there was a sealed envelope that came to me with your name on it.
Yes.
That I passed to you, I don't know what it was or who it's from.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
It was just a card to me from, from Wiz.
That's for second.
Thanking for, thanking us for the follow-up.
Did you get something when you came in? No? That goes to different parts.
Well, so, curriculum coordinator's report?
I do have a correction on my, right underneath assessment, that second sentence, continue to use data to modify instructions, not discussion.
To modify what?
Instructions.
Instructions.
Mm-hmm. Any questions?
Not with the report, you said you were gonna meet this month with the people with the social studies curriculum?
Mm-hmm.
Have you done, have you had that meeting yet?
Yep, Jerry has taken care of that part of the social studies.
Okay.
Making sure that that order went in so that we are covered with that curriculum.
Great.
Do we have a kind of constitutional history in our curriculum at all? As far as Bill of Rights and Constitution and Declaration, all that stuff, what grade do the kids study that?
Two grades, fourth grade.
Fourth grade?
Yeah, you know, and then you, like, seventh grade, you're doing, you know, American history. You also have Constitution Day that we have to go over. We have to also, the, my law mandated to teach on that one day. And then they get a day that isn't, I think it's a temporary, I believe it is, but it's just what we cover and that we, we're able to give the teachers resources, you know, stuff they're not familiar with. We get emails from the state and the feds indicating what we need to teach.
I just, I, I'm a big history buff, so, history fan, not much of a buff, but definitely a fan.
Are we all set?
Yep.
All right. Student services report?
Still questions?
Where's my paper? Ask my question. Here he is, man.
Do we have any questions?
No, looks like he's been busy.
Hi, good morning to all of you. If there are things you need from us that we aren't a hundred percent sure you need from us, if you just let us know because there are gonna be things that we're new at, that we don't necessarily know what you need, whether it's policy updates or, I don't know what you could ask for, but some of us aren't all on the same loop as everybody else with experience, so if you could just let us know, that would be greatly appreciated.
We'll try to provide.
Are you all set, Ralph?
I'm okay with what's going on, yeah.
Are you all set with the student services report? Nope. Principals report?
Firstly, I apologize, I, I cut and paste my format quite often, so I left the date of the chart, it says February sixth. It was certainly, this is not the admin report from February sixth.
Please, please change it.
You change it? Oh, I appreciate that, thank you.
So they got the correct one.
I pulled up my copy that I sent out to the S A, what'd you say? I owned up to a mistake.
Somebody need a copy of that? This went out, this went out by email later than the board packet, so I have hard copies. If anybody needs it.
So, you know, and I, I'm gonna go over a couple of things just because I think there's so much great stuff going on in the building right now. The Reading Rocks, the Dr. Seuss Month celebration, it's just been going off gangbusters and an awful lot of work by people in the building to make it happen. You can look out in the hallway and see the guitars, frets, and the colored in frets that indicate a hundred books have been read for every fret that's colored in. Hundred minutes, excuse me.
You sure?
We had a snow day yesterday, so we had a visitor coming in, Rick Wilcox from I M E up in North Conway. He climbed Mount Everest. He was supposed to be with us yesterday and he'll come in next Tuesday, but you can check out our rock collection down here in the, in the art cabinet in the hallway and, or down in the trophy cat, the trophy case. We emptied out the trophy case for the month. The rocks, the kids have been calling them, like, Angry Bird rocks, if you go and take a look. So the kids having a blast with it and, you know, I can't say how, how excited they're gonna be to see all the teachers involved in this this year. Mrs. Wilson has begun, restarted the Pennies for Patients, which is an annual program for...
The other Mrs. Wilson?
Yes, not this Mrs. Wilson, Deb Wilson, supporting leukemia and lymphoma. The kids are, you know, very invested in that and, you know, last Thursday night, three fourteen on Pi Day, three fourteen, we had a Pi night and math celebration and family fitness night and we were all night long. We had a blast. We had, we were serving pizza and, and the kids are showing off their math activities, taking that opportunity to celebrate math and numeracy as much as we celebrate reading and literacy. And we had a lot of great comments from parents, a lot of investment from students. And the family fitness, those poor guys, they, they were so busy, they were after pizza was being served, I don't think they were ever gonna get out of there. That place was swamped and swirly all night long. And eighth graders got a trip to head, a chance to head down to Spalding last week to see an abbreviated performance of Peter Pan, which was outstanding, is my understanding. I didn't have a chance to go myself, but, you know, special thanks to those who ran the, the cloak and dagger club at Spalding in Houston for allowing our students to go down there, get a, get a taste of what high school experience is like, so. Concludes my report. Any questions?
Any questions? administrative update, would you, Jay?
Any questions? The, the other thing that I have, I don't know whether you want to address it tonight or not, we didn't have it in time for the packet. I do have minutes from the meeting of March eighteenth. If you wanna entertain them now or you can, I thought we would just do them at the next regularly scheduled meeting, but Kathy put them in my packet. So if you wanna look at them and approve them now, we could have it behind us or we can...
Oh, my goodness, is that what she emailed us earlier? That just that?
It's, it's one topic, so.
One little page.
I just got it done and put it away.
May I make a motion to accept the Wakefield School Board meeting minutes from March eighteenth, two thousand thirteen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Interesting.
That's it.
That's it. Everybody all set? Any questions, Jerry? School board business, residency forms.
We have called just about everybody on that list, there's still an awful lot out. Maybe with some, people were very willing to help us out and make sure they get their forms in, and with the, with the resistance from people who think they've already done it, they thought they had sent it in, they have many, twenty-five years, I don't need to send the residency form, so, you know, lots of different responses, but we're getting, they're coming back in now.
And I would like to thank Rochester. Andrew and I met with Mike Hopkins and with some of his staff and they worked with us to send a message out through their Alert Now system. We gave them the list and drafted a message for them and they sent that out to everybody on our, on our list, so they're, they're working with us to get these in. Do you know how many we have left at this point?
You know, we had some, we had a fair number, I'd say probably close to seventy-five or eighty residency forms and now we, now we have, they're starting to roll and now, to give you a number, I mean, they were coming in this morning even, so.
We'll, we'll try to get you a number next time to...
Yeah, 'cause I think the, two meetings ago was like ninety-four and the last meeting?
Last one was fifty-nine.
That was high school only, we hadn't, we hadn't given you account on Paul's school.
Oh, so that's, that's, this is collaborative?
The ones I'm talking about are only for Paul's school.
Okay.
Okay, the ones I'm talking about are talking about the high school.
We, we have two different lists we're working from.
Okay, so.
So how many from the Paul's school?
Collectively, where might we be?
The la, the last... The last, the last time, we knew we were down to about 60, but that was before the communication went out from Rochester. So we've gotta be below that now.
That's what I was saying. The first, two meetings ago, I believe it was 94, and last meeting, I believe it was down to 56.
Yeah, something like, yeah, somewhere in there.
And so, and the cutoff for us to have those in so that we don't pay the tuition is April 1st. So are we gonna really hammer those the next couple of weeks and...
Well, we are hammering them. We have, they went to the truancy officer who was out of town. But I think is now, I think is now back. So we're, we're hitting people in multiple different ways and getting them in as fast as we can. So we're making progress. It's come a long way in the last two meetings.
This, this is the same form that's been submitted to parents in the last few years, is that right? It's been like an ongoing project for a few years?
Every, every year goes out at the beginning of the year.
So you don't keep a historical document if, if in on first grade?
There's a board policy that requires it to be every year. Yeah.
So that's why I get angry every year that...
That's why you get angry every year. You'll have to blame your school board. If you don't like it, run. Oh, forget it.
School, school approval?
Yeah, that's, for us, as for new board members who don't know, we did not make school approval last year. We had a couple of minor issues, an awful minor, and they really were. When I came in, came to my awareness, we put a plan motion to rectify that. We've got most of it taken care of. It really is, it was in two areas, technology and music. Technology was a simple one that we just, they had stopped doing. The digital portfolio, it'd be, Spalding said they didn't want it, and so we stopped doing it, and it's not an option. We have to do it by law. So we do it, even though Spalding's gonna take it and probably put it in the file somewhere, not do anything with it at all. And the music one is just some pieces of the music curriculum that need to be addressed, and Mr. Kenner's got a nice job taking care of that. We go through the school approval process every spring, and we will do so again. I expect we will not have that issue next year.
Is that state? Is that national? Is it? Okay.
Security.
No real updates. I mean, we, you saw the changes we made in the hallway over vacation. We probably won't be doing anything else, I would imagine, until the following vacation.
Nice job, too.
Yeah, great job. Looks wonderful.
They did a super job. And we had a little glitch with our masonry, so, our Mason, I guess we'd say. And so we had to hire the masonry company coming. They did a super job, and it looks good out there in the hallway. Now it's looking at how do we paint it, and what do we do to kinda make it schooly.
Nice.
Did you have something you wanted to add, Scott?
No, I just wanted to remind everybody that our security discussion should happen at another part of the meeting. I didn't know where that was going. That's why I gave it here.
Thank you.
Support staff handbooks.
Those came out last time. Did anyone have any questions, comments, changes they wanted to have made? I didn't receive any requests for changes from anyone. Everybody comfortable with those? If so, we're ready for adoption.
Everybody had time to look at it?
Honestly, we didn't have time to look at it, but...
I think that probably should be tabled to the next and give the new board members a copy.
I just got this on, what, Monday was the latest? Like, late Monday after...
I didn't get one.
Well, there were, there were no changes from the last board meeting. They were, they were handed out at the last board meeting, is my recollection, because I didn't get them done until right before the meeting, and we decided to hold off. But I don't know when new board members might have gotten them. Did you, did you not get them at the last board meeting, David?
Nope.
Okay, so then it sounds like we need to table again.
Could we all get new copies, please?
Sure.
That would be great. Thanks. And do we have to make a motion to table that until the next meeting?
No.
We just had the next agenda.
Let's see. Food service options committee.
That's what we talked about in the last meeting, and it was to establish a committee as to whether or not it would be in the best interest of the school district to take back the food service and what the cost would be. And we talked about the federal grants, and we were gonna wait and get some figures from you, Andrew. Were you able to get any of the figures?
There is, as far as we've been able to tell, there is one high school we've been able to identify in the state that is not participating in the federal lunch program. That high school does not qualify for Title I, so they wouldn't have other federal grants at risk. Numbers of different people have been talked to by different members of the administration in Concord, and they all say, "That's an interesting question. We're not really sure. Nobody's, nobody's done that before that we know of." So we're trying to get definitive answers without going to attorneys and asking them to figure it out, because it does seem to be unusual, and at this point, we're not spending money to figure it out. We, we can certainly go down that road, but at this point, we're bringing back to you that we don't, we don't have any examples right now of similar types of schools to ours that have made that choice.
Well, we talked about having the committee to look at all the options, even if we continued with the free and reduced meals, as that still having it in-house versus having an outside source, and, but having a little better, more input as to where we're getting the supplies from, because the concern was, you know, I think one thing that was brought up in one of our first meetings last year was, I think Liz brought it up, that we were paying $4 a pound for hot dogs. I mean, things like that, and the food service committee would be looking at, you know, are there other vendors? Are there local people maybe we can get produce from? Are there other ways that we can keep the cost down and keep the food service in-house? And still have employees like we did before, but maybe a little tighter rein on the expenses and be able to make it more affordable. And I think we talked about whether or not we'd be able to do it, the whole attachment to the federal grants. And we, we talked about it had to do is whether or not the school qualified for a certain number of free and reduced meals in order to get the grants for Title I, not necessarily that they had to receive those services.
Right.
It's if they qualified. And if, in fact, the parents realize they can get, their kids are gonna get free meals, why wouldn't they send it in? You know, so, and that's what this committee was supposed to be researching. What are the options? What, you know, ultimately, let's look at all the options, and let's basically get the best bang for the buck. Let's be able to see what we can do to bring those reins in as far as expenses, but yet be able to feed kids better quality food and maybe something that's more filling. And we were waiting for the figures, but we said we needed a committee to, you know, separate and start looking at all the options.
I actually have a question on that committee. I, in, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, I look at our superintendent, I look at our building principal, and I look at our business administrator, and I don't know a lot. I mean, I know how to feed children and make them happy, but financially, they're gonna be the ones that, you're gonna know if the children in your building are happy with the food that they're receiving or not. Andrew, you're gonna know if we're paying, getting a good amount for our dollar, if accounts receivables are taken care of, and what grants we have available. And you should be able to meet with people to set that all up, and then you all should be able to come to us without us being part of your committee, because that's what your job is. So I'm wondering why we need to have a committee when you should be getting something together and coming to us with a report. If we give you strategic goals of like, we want the kids to be happy, we know that there's been federal changes, we know that there's always growing pains when you put a new business into any small community, and we know that, I do wanna say, and I'm gonna put this on public record, because I've been accused of offering a three-year contract to our cooking staff because I generously gave them flowers on Valentine's Day. I could not, would not, and have not offered our cooking staff in our kitchen a three-year contract by any way, shape, or form, but did I generally look at them and say, "Let's hope this gets better", and handed them each a flower like I've done every year for Valentine's Day? I wanted to get that out there, because past board members told me that I was promising things that I was not. But I really think that that's, if they're fed, we're in budget, we're not breaking any contracts. You all have better means to look than us micromanaging you. Is that not true? You don't, you're not saying anything, so...
The question is, is there a policy? Do you want to establish a policy that would provide different guidelines than we already have? If there's not a policy matter, then it seems to me, then you need to give us information about what you'd like to have us try to do. Wanting something to be able to be done and being able to do it, there are things I want that are not possible. But we certainly can explore options. We certainly can tell you what's available, what we can learn. I can't promise that we can give you an outcome, because I don't know what outcomes are possible. But if you set parameters, we'll go out and do the work, and I don't think it's any, it's anything that relates to policy or budget oversight or anything that's explicitly their responsibility or the authority of the board.
Part of between Dave and I, we are either covering lunch duty or in each of the lunches for a little bit of time each day. I hear from staff, you know, what they think of lunch, and I think we have a period to handle on when the kids are happy with the lunch. There are times when parts of lunch they're unhappy with, you know, and that's because, and that's part of, you've been to enough of the meetings prior to this and heard. Cafere Services talk about the nutritional guidelines that aren't always as exciting as kids want for their meal. They have to have an awful lot of fruits and veggies in there, and so there are gonna be times when they're unhappy. I wouldn't wanna throw the baby with the bathwater. Not at this point.
David, did you say earlier at this meeting that, that the food, the food issue was something that the board still had to have a representative in on the discussions and stuff like that?
The wellness committee is required to have a representative from the school board, and the wellness committee does, does have a lot of input on, on food. That's a significant part of their responsibility. Thank you.
Can I ask when the deadline is to say whether we do food services or not?
30 days before the next school.
30 days before the next school year?
Uh huh.
So is it possible that maybe we put on the first work session to maybe sit and make some guidelines of what we're, what we're looking for? I don't know how the rest of you feel about that.
Because in all, all fairness, you know, we already determined that we were gonna put off the committee discussions till the following meeting. But, yeah, I wouldn't have a problem doing that at a work session.
I think one of the, one of the questions that, that I will raise when, when we tackle this is, one of the significant frustrations has been balancing the nutritional guidelines, which, I'm, I'm not a nutritionist, but I do want our kids eating fruits and vegetables. I want them to have access to those things. They don't necessarily like them. One of my questions is whether or not the practical solution might be to stick with an established program that we can get support for, and then provide a locally funded snack if we wanted to, that is not necessarily during lunchtime. If kids get hungry, then they get hungry an hour later, or they get hungry an hour before lunch. It's, it's not necessarily cut and dried that the only time kids eat has to be during that time period. So we may be able to have sort of a hybrid in which we make sure that there's more food available for students, but we take advantage of the, of the bulk sale opportunity, and, and I wasn't aware that, that we spent $4 on hot dogs, but I haven't looked at the prices, the prices that we're able to get, and some of them are extraordinarily cheap. It's like, if you wanna get books, talk to a librarian. I mean, they can get cheap books, and food service can get cheap food.
We didn't spend $4 a pound of hot dogs. Liz misread the invoice. It was a five pack. It was a five-pound or a 10-pound package. I forgot the exact situation, but it only cost a couple of dollars, you know, the normal amount of money.
Okay, thanks.
And I think if we just gave them a chance to be a little deceptively delicious, you can hide fruits and vegetables and chicken nuggets and macaroni and cheese. You can do all of that. It just takes working with someone to partner to do that. Carrots and chocolate cake. I've had that. Mrs. Colbat. It does work.
So, so are we putting on the work session agenda, talking about the food needs of the students at Wakefield? I heard it suggested. I wasn't sure. Sounds like a yes. Looks like a yes.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Good.
All right. Area agreement meeting with Rochester, April 29th.
Yeah, that is our, is our regularly scheduled area meeting. And I've communicated that having a discussion about the area agreement is something that, that the board wants to, wants to bring up at that point.
And what time is that meeting? Is that something we go to, or you go to?
Yeah, oh, it's something that you, you go to. I, six, I believe. I will, I will confirm the time.
And it's, is it at the library in, at Spalding?
I don't, I don't know where it is. But we will get out the time and location.
We already touched on the website previously. Do we need to, any more discussion or...
Well, we, we appreciate what has been an unnecessary, seemed like an unnecessary amount of patients. It has taken a long time to get this up, and it really, it's not rocket science. You gotta get it set up right, and then you can get your minutes and your agendas and everything posted, and as was requested, have ways that people that want information can get information pushed out to them. It's, I hope, I hope we're almost done. It's been, it's been a slow process, and I apologize for the rate that we've accomplished it.
Steve, before we get off that area agreement, do you think maybe on the next agenda, we could add a discussion about Kingswood Agreement? We talked about we don't have anything in writing. Could we have that discussion? Because we have students there, but we just have a verbal agreement at this time. And I think with more students going, it would be important to have a discussion about a written agreement.
I want, maybe we should wait till Rochester and find out what we, how we make, what comes out of the meeting with Rochester and then...
Well, it's just that even for the kids who are there, we have nothing in writing.
I understand that, but where we have, this is gonna be discussed with Rochester. Our, our contract now is with Rochester.
Right.
We have a meeting coming up with Rochester. I think it would probably be, at this point, better to talk to Rochester first and then discuss that afterwards. Would be my, my opinion.
I think even for the students that we have there, even if it's only seven, or 10, or 12, or whatever the number is, we should have some kind of agreement.
I, I agree, but what I'm saying is, if we, we, we're gonna discuss the area agreement with Rochester, why, why do it now when it could change April, April 29th, again, and then you're gonna have to redo it again?
Well, there is, there is an agreement for students to go to Kingswood. It's quite different. What it is, is it's an agreement by their school board to accept your students. That's the formal step that they have to take to be accepted as a Kingswood student if they're from Wakefield. It's not an area agreement. Area agreements have to be crafted, and to change them has to go to the State Board of Education for approval. So there, there is a, there is a formal process by which your students are accepted at Kingswood, but it's, it doesn't look anything like an area agreement. It's just, it's just not what you have in place at this time.
But the process is not something in place, like in writing, that they will supply so many services with X amount of dollars and how many students are attending. So as we do, even though it's only 10%, we don't have anything in writing. And in this day and age, verbal agreements are useless. So I think to protect our community, that we need to have things in writing. We're paying X amount of dollars for each student, whether it be five students or 20 students, but just have something in writing, as we do with Rochester, to protect our community as well and protect our students that are there. I understand they're approved, but we don't have anything in writing.
But once again, I mean, at this point, why, why do you wanna do it possibly two and three times? Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be better to discuss that with Rochester? Wouldn't it be better to discuss that with Rochester and then move toward something, getting something in writing with Kingswood? Instead of getting something from Kingswood in writing now, then go to Rochester, discuss that, the area agreement changes with Rochester, they allow more students to go to Kingswood than the area agreement now allows, then you have to turn around and rewrite the agreement again with Kingswood.
Yeah, I was just looking at generally for any student from Wakefield that attends Kingswood, not numbers per se.
But...
That's fine.
Can I ask you, like, we have students through you that go to other districts. Are those area agreements or what type of agreement is that?
I think you're sort of talking about apples and oranges right now.
Okay.
In reference with Mr. McIntyre said, an area agreement or tuition agreement is a formal process of what you say, you're going to take our kids. And it doesn't matter who those kids are. You're going to be our school for our community, which Rochester is right now, and our kids are going to go there. The area agreement allows you to take 10% of those kids and enroll them somewhere else. But there is no agreement between those districts. Those districts decide whether they're going to take the child who applies or not. It falls under their resident district non-tuition student policy. And then it's reinforced by a letter from the superintendent when the child is accepted. So there's a significant difference between, we're going to take some of your kids and we're responsible for your kids' education. So I think there are things in writing that have to do with both. There's a letter that comes from the superintendent that goes to the parent and copies our superintendent. There's a formal process for kids to apply what you allow them to or if they apply first. So I think there are two, really two different topics at this point. Although at some point they may be the same topic if you wish to pursue going on one way.
Wakefield School Board Scholarship in Committee.
That was supposed to be established, the administration.
I think that was done last time. I think that was back on the agenda in era. The discussion was to, that the administration would create an application and an essay topic and a committee was established to read the essays, which was the superintendent, principal, vice principal, and two English teachers and to identify a winner of the scholarship. So I think that's been settled.
Has it happened?
Not yet.
Do we have an expected timeline so that students at all the high schools have a rough idea of how long they have and...
We haven't gotten, we haven't pulled it together yet, so...
Okay.
We don't have an established timeline. Is, if...
Can we put it on the next agenda for an update?
Sure, sure, we can update you on the next agenda.
All right.
Actually, I already have an update.
This is what you're talking about, right, Jay?
No.
No, that's the School Board Association. We don't have anything on the Wakefield.
It's in the minutes.
Right, but we don't have anything formal like that describing. I think that's what the administration's working on.
Yeah.
Mrs. Mason made a motion that got approved, that they would remove the PTA being established, that they would do the $500 and...
I do remember that. And one of the things that was suggested was it follow the same guidelines of the PTA version. And I don't know anything about that PTA version. I have not been able to find anything about how the PTA one worked because it was a PTA activity, not a school activity. So if anybody has information, since the discussion was to follow that process, I don't have anything about that process.
I can give you the information on that.
That would be, that would be great.
From past years?
Yeah.
All right, ad hoc committee survey.
Yep, I sent it to all board members as well as the administration. The actual survey will be turned over to Mary Moriarty, Assistant Superintendent Rochester School District. And then they'll take it from there. She'll put it on a spreadsheet. Did you get yours?
Email.
She's going to put it on a spreadsheet. It'll be presented at the next ad hoc committee meeting, which is on March 26th. And then at that time, once they review that survey, then the committee will vote as to whether or not they want to go any further with the study or if it ends there. So they're looking at the student surveys and now this is the parent survey. And then on the 26th, then the committee will review everything and then decide whether or not the committee's going to go any further.
Was anyone else working with you as representative for that?
Jay is.
Okay.
What's that, committee reports, Wellness Committee?
There was no meeting. We had the fitness night, which the Wellness Committee supported, the staff and was involved. And that's what they did in the pie night, but there was no meeting.
I don't know, I'd like to, maybe I should have done this a little bit, but I'd like to do, once again, you know, the rumor mill seems to be rearing its ugly head once again. I don't, wouldn't understand why, but, you know, it's just, it's getting out of hand. And I just, you know, have an understanding that whoever's, and I'm sure it's probably all of it or most, if not all, is probably not true, but just as long as we have an understanding, you know, that it needs to stop. And hopefully, like I said, what I'm hearing, I don't know if any of you, anybody else is, but just as long as we have an understanding that it stops.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Is this something I said?
No. Should I, I can address this. I was accused by a past board member of being in this building every day and wreaking havoc with the teachers and the staff. And I've been in this building twice this academic school year for, to distribute flowers as well as to read in a kindergarten class for Read Across America, so I have not been in here meddling. And I've also been accused of meeting behind closed doors with Jay for the past six months, evilly plotting, as she said, a crazy takeover of the board, which is not me, has not happened.
Crazy takeover?
Crazy takeover. The first time I was in Mr. McIntyre's office was Friday with Mr. Rollit. Other than sitting here and having a handshake, and I have never spoken with you before. And the rumors are just not nice. And if anyone has something to say, they should be grown up enough to talk to somebody and not listen to rumors. I am here for the good of the kids and the good of the district.
The biggest problem of it that I see, it's probably the same people who were sitting up here stating the same thing last year or the year before. And so it just needs, as long as we have an understanding, it needs to stop. You know, if there's people doing things that they shouldn't be because they're no longer board members, you know. I mean, I've heard rumors about things that you've been stating. Like I said, I'm sure that they're not true, but I'm getting people telling me that you're out there, you know, saying all these things and it just, it...
I work for the board and for the students of Wakefield, so whatever, I mean, there are rumors of me, when I've referred to, and basically an eye for an eye mentality of infighting, there are rumors out there that I have said it's karma, that has, you know, people are in bad situations because of karma, which I don't believe, so I certainly wouldn't have said. There, at times, has been a culture of infighting that I think we've all seen. It's not a secret. And I have, in an individual setting, suggested that we need to get over the infighting and we have to stop fighting and start working together for kids. But the, you know, rumors that I have been involved in other things or colluding with members of the community, and if members of the community want to come in and talk to me, that's my job. So if you had come in and talked with me, there wouldn't be anything wrong with that. It just hasn't happened. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure where stuff is coming from, but it's, people in the public have certainly seen through the last eight months that the administration has been, you know, staying out of matters that aren't for us. The board polices the board. The board is responsible for the board and our job is to support the board. It's not to get involved in disagreements. Our job when there's disagreements is to stay out of it. And that's not always easy to do. So that's what we're trying to do, is focus on students and the board is focusing on policy. And we look forward to continuing to teaming with the board.
Thank you. Comment for the public.
I had a phone call last Thursday from a former board member telling me basically what you just said, what Bonnie just said, and that somehow I was in cahoots with you. You've been going, seeing Jay for the last six months in his office, that I have been in cahoots with you and two administrators and a town employee to go after a certain member on the board. I don't know where this is coming from. I let you tell you it's not from me?
We know that.
Okay. As long as you know that, that it's not coming from me, because I was told the same thing. And I said, who is starting these rumors? Is it absolutely crazy?
Or I should say, I know that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Another subject, I'd like a clarification. When you're talking about work sessions, what's the difference between a work session and actually starting your regular meeting earlier? I mean, what would be the difference?
I think it's just basically trying to help streamline the regular meetings, that's all, just so we can maybe, you know, there's been a change in the hours because some members can't get here, because they work out of state or whatever. I think it's just something, because there is a lot of work there. And I think it's just, it was just an idea to possibly help with the new, the new hours that the board is going to be meeting, that's all.
It might be that the work session or workshop is on a different date as opposed to a regularly scheduled school board meeting and just opening up earlier, doing some work earlier on that same day.
But it would still be a public meeting?
Sure.
Still a public meeting.
And I mean, the cameras will either be there or not be there.
Hopefully they're there.
The general public will see. I just wonder what the clarification was. It seems to me you're just starting a meeting earlier or...
Just a date.
Well, I think it's to help, to help, to try to stop the midnight meetings is basically what it's really designed for. I've never been a fan of the midnight meetings and to be perfectly honest with you, I've been to too many of them and I would just like to see them stopped.
I can't disagree with that.
My experience of the difference between the two has been that when work sessions have been called, they're typically informational and not decision-making. So typically, there are not actions at work sessions. What we haven't done this year, partly because of the length of the meetings, is spend any time with training. And it would be, it would be great at, you know, perhaps at each work session, we could devote 15 or 20 minutes or half an hour to, you know, updates on school law. You know, let's talk about 91A. Let's have a discussion about content or about instruction, about what is it that makes a good reading program? The board typically doesn't have time to just get information to help it do its job. And that's something that you can do at a workshop if you start early and not have to go quite as late during the board meetings. So that's what I had interpreted.
Has anybody asked the parents whether or not they would want to send their kids to Kingswood if we supplied transportation? I mean, has that ever been done, that little, I mean, you're going forward wanting to have an option, which you actually do right now, but how many kids would actually go to Kingswood? What do the parents say?
I don't know if they've ever been asked.
I mean, is that a good idea to ask them?
I would say first and foremost. Do the kids want to go there?
Well, I think that was part of the process of us going over there and then, you know, requesting to, you know, set something up with the superintendent to see how many kids that, you know, they'd be willing to accept, yada, yada. And now we have to talk to Rochester to see if, because that will change that area agreement, to see if Rochester will agree to say 50% of our kids, because I do know, I've heard a lot that people want an option. Kids want to either go to, some kids may want to go to Spalding, some kids may want to go to Kingswood. So, I mean, I would definitely think that that would be, once we, you know, talk to Rochester, I think we'll find out a lot at that area agreement, when, you know, see what Rochester's thoughts are of how many kids they would actually, will they allow 50% of our kids to go elsewhere? If they do, that would change it. And if they didn't, I would absolutely be, you know, trying to get a bus to go over to Kingswood.
But asking them if they would allow 50% when maybe we don't even have 50% that would be wanting to go, even if those transportation seems a little putting the cart before the horse.
And I think as a matter of respect, for the number of years that you've been working in partnership with Rochester, my recommendation is that you talk to your current partner first and let them know that you have an interest in exploring other options. I think given the length of the relationship and the amount of support they've provided to Wakefield students, that giving them the first opportunity seems to me like the respectful approach.
Mine was just on Priscilla's comment about the bus, you know, and you'd want to talk to parents about whether or not they'd be willing to bring their kids to a certain bus stop or pickup to head that way, or would we dedicate a bus to go all around town to pick up the kids?
If a bus was dedicated, the kids could either go to Kingswood or they could go to Rochester. Where would parents want their kids to go? If you've got 75% of them that still say Rochester, I mean, that's pretty telling.
Any other public comment, Derek?
Yeah, I was curious. At the last meeting of March 6th, there was a discussion about when you guys swore out then and we weren't sure whether he was still on the Budget Committee or School Board or both. And I thought that Jay was going to check into that before this meeting. That was the last board. I don't know if they kept up and checked on what the determination was on that.
The, I got informal input on that. I didn't opt to spend money on attorney time for that. The informal message was that it's not uncommon for people not to resign until they know they've been elected to another board, but the expectation typically in New Hampshire is that it be done immediately upon joining a new board is removing oneself from another board. But I reiterate that I did not go to counsel on that. I asked for what typical practice was in New Hampshire.
Okay, we usually, at the town level, we usually technical local government center because we're members of that and their staff lawyers don't guide us for advice, so we can get, we can get information on things like that without, you know, without paying for a lawyer. But I remembered at the meeting that, you know, you were going to check into that, I was curious what the outcome had been. But I think I was wondering about the website. I was wondering, is that something that, is that something that Back Bay does? They do the website and the updates because I noticed the SAU website has this meeting, the 20th posted, but it didn't have the meeting posted for the 18th. So is that something that the Back Bay does? You give them the information and then they do the updates on the website?
Well, that's what I was referencing earlier, is that, is that today, I think that's right, so days get fuzzy, was when there was the first meeting between Back Bay and the two individuals in the office who are, they are training to post so that when things come up, they don't have to go to Back Bay and then get put on, that we can post it right from our office. So that training started today because our intent is to not have to do everything through them. In answer to your original question, does Back Bay do the website? The answer is yes, however, it wasn't part of their original... The answer is yes, however, it wasn't part of their original contract. That was something that came on later. They originally were, we're going to look at the website, we're going to try to help us tweak it. And when they got in and looked at it, they said, the way it's been constructed, it's been constructed in so many different pieces, so many different styles, so many different structures, that really you're going to be better off taking it down and starting over. So we identified additional resources, and they actually had to identify a person, a person to do that who was not on their staff, who they brought on to work on it. So it was an additional responsibility that came to Back Bay fall, Andrew, is that right? Late fall, mid-fall?
Yeah, it was just before the holidays.
Just before the holidays, yeah. They tried to tweak it and make it work, and eventually just said, you know, you're going to be better off if we just start from scratch. And the original, the ultimate intent is for us to be able to have the staff capacity to do all those updates so they're really timely.
Well, that's what the town's trying to do too. And I'm surprised because I've done updates on websites, and we just built one for our local page channel, so I don't, they make all these things more user-friendly. I don't understand why it's so difficult, you know, for them to do that. But I've noticed a lot of, I've noticed a lot of problems that people seem to have with Back Bay through the last couple of years, sitting here watching the meetings. It seems that, it seems that Back Bay as an organization seems to fall short of all our expectations on a lot of different, a lot of different areas. But that's something the board will have to do. But you mentioned RSA 91 and talking about some of the training during some of the work sessions of the boards and things. And earlier Ralph said that I used the phrase emergency meeting because I didn't know what else it would be, what else it would be considered. Because RSA 91 explains that you can have public, non-public, and you can have emergency meetings. And they didn't have any other classification, but I did have the definition of what they considered an emergency here. It said, it shall mean a situation where immediate, undelayed action is deemed to be imperative by the chairman or presiding officer of the public body, who shall post the notice of the time, meeting place, such meeting soon as practicable, and shall employ whatever further means are reasonably available to inform the public that a meeting is to be held. So they seem to have a pretty high standard for emergency or emergency meeting. So, I mean, I think that if you're going to have a public or non-public or an emergency meeting, and they all fall into the topics that are covered up by the law, I don't know that if you just, you know, take an emergency meeting and call it something else, that I don't know if that's necessarily a way to, you know, get around following the law. So, you know, to the point, that was why I was trying to use that, trying to find out what that, what that actually was considered. You know, because they have those three basic topics covered, and I was trying to figure out which category it fell into.
Another resource you might want to look at is, I'm pretty sure it was four years ago, I think it was 2009, that the Attorney General's Office put out a document, it's about 90 pages long, that gives a lot more interpretation of the right to know law. Because what's in the RSA, as you know, is very tight. And yet there is case law and rulings that all relate to that. So that document is one that I have in my office, and I've used that. My recollection of that is that special meetings are a category. But you inform me that it's not, and I don't question your knowledge of the law. I'm going to go back and take a look at that AG's report because my recollection and from prior experience is that special meetings don't, that special meetings can be called, that don't have to be the ones that were regularly scheduled, and they don't constitute an emergency. So I'm going to look into that because I don't, I don't like to make mistakes. And you have suggested that one had been made. You've been very public about saying that the board might have gotten bad advice from me, and I respect that. I'm not an attorney, but I do my best. But I'm going to go back, and that's the document that I'm going to reference.
Well, I can appreciate that. They always have legislative updates. I mean, every one of these laws have gone to court, and the Supreme Court and the State Supreme Court has made different rulings on different ones. And I mean, I think that, I think that the laws are pretty, you know, they're open to interpretation, and I don't think they're quite as tight as you say they are. But, you know, when you call them a special meeting, I know that if you're going to call a special town meeting, you actually have to petition the Superior Court to get permission to, to get permission to hold a special town meeting. So, I mean, emergency meetings and special meetings and these other things aren't just something that you just, you know, you just go and do. I mean, the law takes them very seriously. If you have to file, the town has to file a petition with the Superior Court to get permission to hold a special town meeting, that's a pretty high level.
May I address something? May I address something?
Good.
I know it's probably not appropriate, but I need to. You brought up the fact about the swearing in, and I was concerned about that as well when you brought it up that night because I wasn't sure about the Budget Committee and the fact that you were still on. I did go back, and I did recall that three years ago, when there was an opening on the board, and I believe it was when Barney left, and there was someone needed to be appointed, I did go to that meeting with Judy Nason. And as a matter of fact, I believe that was also a meeting where Kim was also sworn in. And Judy was appointed. And they did swear her in right then, and she was a current member of the Budget Committee. And going back a couple of meetings past that, it seems to be that that was common practice, that only if they were offered that position, that they would immediately submit their resignation. And, you know, I mean, I don't know whether, I know that's the way it's been done because I was there at that meeting, and she was sworn in, and then she took her place as soon as they came out of non-public, you know, at the table, and then gave a resignation. So I checked only because you questioned the fact that Ralph was on the Budget Committee. And it was the same thing three years ago as well. So I just wanted to know, I checked on that, and that's the way it was handled then too.
Well, it wasn't an issue. It all depends, it seems that this town of Wakefield has segments where it's okay at certain times for certain people to do certain things. And then a couple of days later, or months or years later, another segment may come in and do an identical action. And because the other segment may be offended or disgusted or disgruntled, that's when the problems arise. So it's just, you know, they're all growing pains. Eventually, the town will grow up and will have less time spent on silly issues like this.
Move motion to, going to non-public?
Under.
Jay, you have your list by chance?
I just have my list. Tuition requests, so... Tuition requests are... Student, student, student matters, but I've got to figure out which one of those. RSA 91A32...
Oh, actually, this is what you were asking for. It's just not in the laminated form, I think.
What you got?
C.
91A2C?
91A32C.
32C?
Yes.
For tuition requests.
There's not one that says tuition request, but the reason you have to have a tuition request is because it's a matter that's private in nature relating to a student, so it falls under that classification. There isn't one that specifically says that.
Did I get a second?
Second.
Home with David?
Aye.
CRI?
Mr. CDOI?
Brown, aye. Thank you for coming. 32E?
32E, which is just to update you on litigation. If you can have a second and...
Second?
Oh, all right, thank you.
Brown, yes.